That one is real spotty, just that one.
Good afternoon, everybody. We call the order in the Ford County Commission meeting for July 7th, 2025. Our meeting number today is 2025-20. We'll start with prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Joel Tushin.
Pastor Joel's not available.
Mason Smith.
So I thank you for allowing us to gather here today to discuss and make decisions on the issues that are relevant to our community and in particular county. I pray that you would give us clarity and discernment so we can make the good and proper decisions. You would bless this county and this meeting in particular. And just say amen.
Amen.
The Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, we have a consent agenda meeting minutes for meeting 2025-17, 18, and 19. And a credit card statement. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Motion to second any further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have approval of plans for payment, the amount of $1,450,882.51. I just had a balance that was fairly less than that.
You have to add up several, we have some special checks, so you have to have us together.
There was medical, two non-medical, ceiling sand, pit wall clearing, and a permit.
I'll make a motion to approve the plan. Second that? Motion to second any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have open public comment. Five minutes for individual, 15 minutes for topic. Final action being for the Mexicanic Commission meeting. Unless we find that emergency situation exists, we refer to public comment. No Jakers, we move along. We have a planning and zoning requestation to establish some inflation fees.
For a brief update, due second, I revised a fee schedule. To replace one established under Resolution 2011-17, the goal was to simplify the structure, ensure fees are fair and transparent, and bring the Ford County more in line with surrounding counties. One of the key changes I proposed was the removal of emergency fees. These fees were attached to several permit types. My office does not process emergency requests. All applications are handled according to local and state timelines. These additional charges were significantly invading costs, particularly for plaques. This proposal has been tabled twice. First, new request for a side-by-side comparison of the old and new fee schedules. And second, following a suggestion from one of the commissioners to consider eliminating some fees for Ford County property owners altogether. In response, I've provided a breakdown of all the fees collected by my office for the past four years. So you should have a breakdown of those fees. So over the last four years, the planning and zoning office collected approximately $77,720 in permit fees. This includes revenue from zoning certificates, also known as building permits, conditional uses, plaques, subjecting well permits, and other services. A significant portion of these revenues came from fees that included now questionable emergency fee components. In light of the feedback and financial data, I would like to propose the following. Removing the building and subject permit fees from the schedule for property owners as suggested while maintaining the requirement for permits, ensuring that all the construction and development remain subject to review and compliance with zoning and environmental health regulations. I did do an updated resolution, and I put it on the desk in front of you. And this approach will reduce the financial burden on residents while preserving the oversight necessary. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your work on this, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
After reviewing what you had for us there last time, you know, I was the one that asked for the review. I didn't find a whole lot there that you really had the ability to change on. With the two areas there that you could change, I thought was an opportunity to, and it's not a lot.
No.
But we give just a little bit back there for, and especially for the property owners that are developing their own property. They don't have any opportunity to see their property tax.
And I feel that it gets them more encouraged to come in and do that building permit.
Sure. And as you said, we still have the requirements as far as inspection and those kind of things.
Right.
And we have a penalty.
If they don't come in.
If they don't come in, so I think we're good there. Thank you for working on this.
You're welcome.
Motion, I guess you, gentlemen, you've got, both got copies of the new [inaudible]. I would make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-15, as amended today by [inaudible]. All right, I'll second that. Motion to second any further discussion?
It's a lot of thought put into it, and I would say, when you look at the overall expense of what people have paid in, I don't know, I don't know, like, if there's any guilt or feeling or anything about the emergency fees, but it doesn't, in my mind, in the business world, it doesn't seem like that's a lot when we've asked of anybody. Because I assume that's lots of projects.
It's not really a lot of projects, but the thing is, is I've had to wheel some people in because they won't come in.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I actually had one, one person that I caught, and all it was is a $50 fee, but he thought it was a $2,000. And I'm like, no, it's $50, so you need to come in and get this figured out.
Yeah. I think you've done a great job with it, and I, I think it's, I think it's a good review of.
Thank you.
Rudy helped me a lot on this, too. I'd like to point that out.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, next we have legal counsel.
Well, I've heard you all today.
Good.
I'm here today regarding the vacation part of Chestnut Road between 133 and 134. I know it's before you, but I recognize the notice has been given to go into a public hearing on vacation.
Okay, you can do that here in this meeting.
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion to have the open meeting for the hearing.
It is, there's a resolution 2025-21 asking the landowners, all landowners actually adjacent to the Chestnut Road between 133 and 134, they all petitioned for the vacation there. There, then there's a public hearing for the commission to find that it's not a public utility by reason of non-use or inconvenience, and the necessity for such road as a public utility does not justify the expenditure costs necessary to maintain said road. So if the commission makes that finding in this hearing, then we can go ahead and reach this out and you can consider this.
Yeah, just, just for, yeah, so just for clarification, you did say a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't necessarily think you need a second, right? Because all you have to do is open it for discussion? Because it's not a motion, it's just an opening.
Sorry about that. No, you're okay.
So that's probably why you started talking. Because you're.
Motion to just open the public.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that, I apologize for adding to the confusion, but the notice of the public hearing was published for the two consecutive weeks. The commission would need to make that finding, and then we'll be able to adopt the resolution. Any questions?
So we are expecting the public hearing part of this to happen at this meeting?
Correct.
We don't have anybody here for that right now?
It's my understanding that there were no objections at all raised to this.
It's like everybody signed?
Yes, all adjacent landowners.
We don't have anybody here to do that.
Anyway.
All right. I'm approving.
And it would be my recommendation to approve for Resolution 2025-21 presented vacating.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve. This is Resolution 2025-21. Since all neighboring landowners are in agreement that this road should be closed, and go ahead and adopt that as presented.
I'll just second that. Second, any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll vote, I'll vote in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. I can bring this to you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is for Chief Judge Lewis and her staff. It's a while, but we're going to leave your court office.
Hopefully you all have got my submission of our, our motion. Basically, what we're requesting is permission to get some remodels to the clerk's office. Basically, well, we'd love to have all that at the same time, or our house is done, but now since that seems to be a recurring project. Anyway, we're asking for the ability to do some reconfiguration, basically, and our court processes have changed. We no longer do paper filing, so that leaves us with a lot of dead space that's just staying here by physical, you know, shelving and things like that. So we'd like to remove that, do a reconfiguration of the desk that we have in there, and then also do some security upgrades where we're limiting the public access and putting in some security features for the public access areas. That's pretty much what we're requesting.
Can I go over those drawings, summarize a little bit?
Sure.
We're basically altering things on the inside of the carpet of court, so we're not touching anything in the corridor, not messing with any of the storage materials or anything. We are reducing the size of the public counter and basically closing it with an aluminum and glass storefront system. There will be two areas where people can, you know, pass through objects, paper, that kind of thing. Otherwise, it's just a simple window system to provide as much vision for the clerks who will come into that space. And then replacing all of the carpet in the area. There is a small area of vinyl, vinyl tile that we'll be putting in break area. And then a new recessed in-wall mailbox. Those are, those are the big highlights. I guess we're also going to be removing the existing kind of local storage shelving, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So are these three different versions of the same footprint?
No, so I'm just showing the co-plan. And these, so these would be our drawings for permit. Co-plan shows egress. We're really not changing egress at all. We are taking out a little section there. Where it says Clerk 122, there's a little column there. There's a vestibule currently, and we're just taking that out to open up that space for more work area. The entrances will remain the same. We're just going to close it to public access. It'll be still egress, egress for employees that aren't going to access. So then we show the demolition plan and then the revised plan so that these can go out to contractors who are basically, that's what it is. And then the third page has some of the details, just so that we can kind of communicate how we want that, that secure window system to operate, since there are kind of different levels to openings below. There's a counter there, below the counter is just a wall, just trying to clarify that. Questions for us?
This is a request by, is that correct? I'll make a motion to approve the project as presented, authorize. I'll second that. Motion to second. Any further?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time. I will take them.
I'll put it on my desk. Next item is for Ms. Yedder. Welcome back.
It's been so long. A vacancy is occurred on Ford County zoning board due to a member relocating to downtown city. According to the board's bylaws, the zoning board must maintain a balance of representation with three members residing in the unincorporated areas of the county and two residing in the incorporated areas that departing member previously represented the unincorporated area. This vacancy will be filled by appointment by the Board of County Commissioners and will serve the remainder of the current term, which ends June 22nd, 2027. I received four applications, which you should have gotten a copy of all four applications. All applicants meet the basic eligibility requirements, and I'm asking for you to consider the residency, the experience, and the overall composition of the board when making your selection. This appointment is an important opportunity to ensure continued representation of the county's diverse community and to support the effective functioning of this zoning board. Thank you.
I'm happy to see that we have four applicants.
I was just.
That's, that's great. And I know, I know each of them. Something that, and each of them are qualified. Something that I would be looking for from this particular position, I think, is we haven't had a former, an active guy in ag, business production agriculture sitting on board since we had Mr. Grant Powers. And I think that's important to have somebody with that kind of representation. I think, and we have two of those, and one of our applicants. I'm good with either one of those. But I think that would be a direction that I would want.
So would you lean towards a farmer and bilingual? Is that what you're thinking?
I think I'm looking more towards an actual production, agriculture, type of representation, somebody that's.
Yeah, full-time.
Full-time.
All right. Well, I know, you know, Noe Chou has been in front of us a couple times, and I know I've caught him in the hall where he discussed a zoning issue with me about something that he had of low roads. And I thought that was interesting, but I mean, he's been coming back and forth quite a bit. I like, I like that he's bilingual. I think that's something that's nice for board.
Sure.
It's interesting when you think about like the names here, because, you know, I think of like three of them have interacted in one issue on different parts of the issues, if that makes sense? Like we've had multiple of them on the solar farm on both sides.
Oh, yeah.
And then, you know, when you think about like even just the Mexican rodeos, we've had two of these on both sides. So I think even that's kind of interesting, because you kind of see their feelings. I would tell you that I, you know, when the solar farm was going on air and reached out, and he had a really good conversation about just, he was so neutral about everything. It came across very refreshing that he was just wanting to have a conversation, maybe to take the light off of us and almost have a conversation, maybe with people that were kind of bringing the issues forward, or maybe didn't have the full picture. I like that. I mean, it was very nice that way. I mean, again, four qualified.
Sitting, I mean, what our board populated right now, we have, we have backgrounds in real estate agents, arasters, construction.
Yeah, that's right.
And all super qualified, and they're just a good top. I guess where I'm at with community representation is that Ford County is by and large, and our number one industry in the county is agriculture. I think it's imperative that we have somebody representing that viewpoint. This, this is the only board I think escapes some people is to have a board. And as such, the decision that we make on a council level here is similarly very important to make it true.
Are there rules on people applying to this? Like if.
They have to, on this one, they had to look out for town.
Okay. And then if somebody from the city comes on, do these people reapply even though they live in a town?
They, it has to be somebody from the city. I have to have two from the incorporated, three from the out.
Got it.
Incorporated Jeremy Engel and Julie Chris Cole.
I would make a motion to approve the application of Aaron Gers.
I'll second that.
Motion to second, any further discussion?
You guys know better than I do, all, I know some of the names, met a few of them. I'll have to defer to your guys' judgment on this. It's five questions on an application, is just my knowledge of knowing them.
They are all qualified for the position.
And they all care about the county, and they have shown interest in the county, all of them.
Yeah, the, the, the only one I was really kind of leaning towards, Aaron as well, that is, is just if we're losing somebody to speak Spanish, maybe gaining somebody to speak Spanish. But we might be able to do that if another somebody in the board opens up and somebody from the city come on. Because I think that would be, it would be important, maybe to, I don't know, almost have like a bilingual representative, because I'm sure that's helped.
And that's, and I was leaning towards Noe, because I know Noe the best, he, as he is bilingual, but it is imperative right now.
Yeah.
But again, this is a rule, I was corn. We have four good candidates, and I was glad to see it's your guys' decision.
Well, I know Noe do really like you, but I think he's going to be a great candidate, of course, a candidate for you.
Sure.
And I hope he has application with us.
I do, sir.
If there's not any further discussion, I'll be, I'll take, I'll call over. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item is for Nikki Baker.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Nikki, how are you?
I am well. How are y'all doing today?
Good.
Everybody pretty much knows me, except Gary. Gary, my name's Nikki Engel. I work for Verda Hoag in the Register of Views office on the fourth floor. Every year, we come and we request permission from the commission to purchase DOT City daypens to sell to Ford County employees. So I'd like to request the purchase of 300 pens at $3 each for a total of $900. Sell to county employees $3 apiece. That's about it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the purchase of the DOT City's little pens in the amount of 300 pens.
I'll second. Motion to second, any further discussion? Purchasing that at.
$3 apen?
Three. We got $3.50 on our list here, so that's to buy 99 or less. If, if they don't match. Yeah, it's not matching. It's more, again, we were saying 350, so that's what we need to clarify. All right.
We kind of, it's kind of a struggle to sell 300. Somebody tried not to go above that, but the firm is always really pushing up there at the very end, so, yeah.
All right. I'll call over, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
The next two items are Ford County engineer John Webber.
Good afternoon. Start off with the county engineers report for the passes on, now it's three weeks now, so it's a whole month, so that's here in the middle of June last time. Up to the list, on Highway 50, it's on the county project, but I've been keeping the commissioners down to date on what's going on. And as a reminder that we are near completion, the contractors are just working on final list items at this time. But the, the agreement between KDOT and Ford County was that the county would take over maintenance responsibility for the access roads in Ford County that were constructed as part of this project, once the project has been accepted by KDOT. So it looks like we're getting closer to that point in time. We'll work with KDOT to clarify when precisely that will be, but presumably it will be before the coming winter. We certainly want to clarify that if the county is going to be responsible for snow and ice removal this coming winter. But I will leave those hooks out there without any maintenance. We'll work with KDOT and get them to clarify when that's gonna, when the transfer's gonna happen.
I know whenever that happens, we have a semi that was parked in front of a residential kind of area that once the county takes over, we can then move the semi, but it seems like KDOT maybe isn't...
We, we've received several complaints out there since this has started, and most of those surrounding drug areas. It is KDOT right now, but it's gonna be our problem. So some neighbors are stocking, and they've got it de-escalated.
Good, great.
So that is a discussion we probably need to have sooner than later on, potential signage and the dews and dumps on the surrounded roads. They're getting backlogged, they're pulling, they're running, I say they're running businesses, but they're parking semis with trailers on the surrounded roads, and it's causing a headache for owners to get in and out of the property, so.
But I was, I, I think probably we need to further that discussion of just saying, when that comes up, we probably need some sort of a notification of date of ownership change and how we can move forward with enforcement.
Right, sounds like a future resolution, maybe no parking of some sort and...
Yeah.
No sign for speed on this car either, so that would obviously as well, but I hope anything...
Can't go that fast on the...
Super fast on those because they're pretty short, but so we'll try it.
Yeah, sure.
So you have to make this speed resolution as well, kind of in the future.
So yeah, we'll sort of keep, keep a touch with KDOT on when that comes about.
If there's extra millings, if they had leftover extra material, that road off of Powell, that kind of goes back towards Simron?
Jewel.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see if we can get some improvements on that, even if they've just got stuff they want to pull out of fields and turn fields back into fields, maybe if we can get that aggregate and throw it up there.
Yeah, I don't know what they're, I think KDOT just turned out all of the contractor stuff, if they're kind of on any of the bookly or if they're, if they used it or all in the awful, what they got planned for that.
Yeah.
Just sort of Bradley's aware of it, he'll keep his eyes there open.
I haven't heard anything yet, but it doesn't mean...
Fair enough.
But the, the four lanes are all open, all the way from about City to Simron, so that's very exciting to drive on the divided four lane now. Looking toward trapping that project up in its entirety this summer or maybe in the fall, see how things come along. Next item on the, on my list here is the 113 Road reconstruction and expansion project to extend the four lane up to Highway 50. Between Highway 50 and Comanche Road, right there in front of the Ford County Sheriff's Office EMS and the county shop, Road and Bridge Shop. Contracts have been sent to most part of construction. We touched base with them last week. This may will get those back to our office this week, and we can get them over to Ford County in time for your next commission meeting. Construction had been scheduled in that contract for August 4th. We need to confirm with the contractor if they're taking the start on that date, or if they, if they need a little more time. At that, the clock will start ticking on then August 4th, because I mean, they have to start, but on August 4th, they have 110 working days to get the job done. So might get into liquidated damages. So we'll be looking to schedule the pre-construction meeting here in the next couple of weeks with the contractor in Ford County. Talked with Brad this morning about starting the public information campaign to let the public know because the road will be that mile will be closed during construction, from Highway 50 to Comanche Road. It'll be closed right out on the north side of Comanche, so anybody coming up from wide or be able to go west on Comanche. It'll be barricaded. People choose to go around barricades, it's right from sheriff's office, so that would be a wise idea. So we'll look forward to, the road to be closed first being August, and contract will promptly start milling up the old asphalt, referring to base.
We started talking about this project, the infrastructure updates, and the city is planning to have accomplished or is that all?
It is, yeah, so nothing is truly in the way, per se. The city has some water lines up there, but the ditch grading is going to be done, we'll be left with only a couple of feet of cover, where they prefer like 40 inches for cross protection in the wintertime. But the city is, they've already got the pipe ordered, that goes on the commission agenda last, in the last month, to purchase the pipe and hire directional drillers to board new pipe under the, under the road where it needs to be. So it's all set up and going places. The city decided just to be, I think, more efficient to handle that on their own, if they're connected with our project on the roadside. So they utilized our plans to be able to come up with their own design. But yeah, it's, it's going in the forward direction.
Is that north end of Highway 50?
No, that's gonna come off Comanche, off the northwest corner of Comanche, 113 Road.
Pipe stored out there from my office right now.
And then they'll go on the west side of 113 Road and cross under, which here got the facilities on the east side. In the future, the city discussed that they would like to extend that line all the way north to Highway 50. They looked that together, but that's gonna be in a year or two down the road. So there's a, I think, a 10-inch line that comes up from along Comanche to 113 on the north side. But it only goes to the Road Bridge Shop currently to the north. In the future, they were, the city would like to extend that all of it to Highway 50 and connect to the existing line in Highway 50. So they can loop those lines together and go out to right, on at least the right. All of the utilities will clear it out of the way, so. Okay, going down my list, the next item I had was on the solar farm construction south of Dot City. Kirk and Michael, as well as Ford County staff, have been out there observing use of the roads, condition, as well as who's using the roads, and seeing that they're sticking to the roads that were designated and agreeing with Ford County due to repeated violations of following, not following those designated routes. Kirk and Michael has started issuing $1,000 disruption fees every time we catch a violated vehicle off approved routes, and that's occurred three different times to this point now, and will continue. Plans will continue, but hopefully they just stick to the roads, we don't have to get, do that anymore. We're still also working with the solar farms to address a few road maintenance issues out there.
So where, where are they going that is off track?
It's kind of been every different direction. Some of it, early on, was going, they were only supposed to go on trim roads, I think to 112, 112 or something like that. And they went further east than what they said they're going to, they got that, they're gonna shut down now, they've gone south once or twice when they weren't supposed to, and they've gone north on 112 where they weren't supposed to.
Based on their weight of the vehicles and stuff that's running up the road there?
It's, well, I mean, according to agreement, any large truck was supposed to stick to sort of designated routes. And so it's just a matter of communicating internally with the solar farm, internally, internally communicating with any of their vendors or haulers to use those designated routes.
And so far today, they've been fined?
They have been fined three times, $3,000, yeah, $3,000 total.
I would not take a trip down 112 south of that plant right now, no way.
And that was, that was probably the worst one, is unfortunately a truck went down there right after a pretty significant rain, it had stopped, it got on the road. Had to be pulled out, but...
Very major rocks.
If you don't want that happening. So that project continues. Originally, they had said that they were planning to be completed with the project in February 2026. We do want to have a discussion whether we need to confirm with that schedule still on course, if they, they have an updated schedule of completion. Whether they anticipate the final delivery coming in, and we haven't heard internally what they plan to start. They do have a short electrical transmission line that they need to construct to connect to the grid as well. Better when we plan to start that either. Got to get some information about what's gonna happen in the future.
Where's, where's that going?
Now, so it starts over, there's a substation over about the roads gardens, that comes to the west along the river there.
Because I saw a picture of working on that for a while.
Okay. It's gonna be by the north of Larry Highway, I believe.
And that's, that's where they ended up purchasing that strip of land there by green areas?
Right, right. Another active project, this is a county bridge improvement project to replace Ossisson Bridge 101. As we've been discussing, Kirk and Michael continues to work with the Corps of Engineers on the permit received for that bridge. They did a 30-day public comment period. As far as I'm aware, they did not receive any comments, obviously they didn't provide any to us after that 30 days expired. The state historic preservation office requested photos of the existing bridge because of its age and its somewhat unique construction at the time, and having a haunched underside, it's been set behind a flat bottom and it's curved. So I did provide them the JPGs from our bridge inspections in the past, and a description of what they were looking at in the photo. We said that was sufficient for their needs to document that existing bridge. And the final piece of it is going to continue, to complete, I should say, the application to the national registry of the Pratt Trust Bridge down by, so we're still working on that application as well. Hopefully get that turned in as soon as we can, so we can get it made to, get it finalized. Next up on active projects is the Ossisson Bridge 31. Because of anticipated workload for Kirk and Michael, we actually approached S M H consultants to assist the county with the roadway acquisition on that project. They have provided an agreement, which I've sent to Ford County legal counsel. Once we get their comments and get the legal side satisfied, we'll bring that to the commissioners for approval so we can move forward with procuring the roadway needed to realign that road, the bridge. I think the last thing was just on the Clark Solar Farm, in this project, it's not in Ford County, but they proposed using county roads. I, sure that Kirk and Michael had provided comments for the county councillor on the reduced maintenance agreement. And he had sent our combined comments on to the developer, and I saw an email, looks like they commented just with access today. So we'll continue that negotiation to finalize that reduced maintenance agreement. Two final items ahead of my notes, that I was planning to present an engineering agreement for developing details of this specifications to do a deck repair and polymer overlay on, on the Coronado Bridge, 117 Road south of this 400. I did not get that ready at the time of this meeting. Do intend to give a draft agreement to the county councillor here in the next week or two to get reviewed, and I'll bring it to the commissioners in the near future. I should have it, I'm, I'm actually gonna try to ask to defer my next meeting to August 18th. And I have a family commitment that's coming up for August 4th, and I should be able to have that bridge engineering agreement by the 18th. So to conclude my county engineering report, entertain any questions? Or move on to the next item?
On that, on the bridge there, the Coronado Bridge, we've had dumping over the sides of that bridge.
Still have dumping on the sides of the bridge.
I almost wonder if this is a time maybe when we should address maybe the side of the bridge? If we brought the side up higher, would that be harder for people to actually chuck items over the side? I mean, if we're gonna already be out there doing work, is this a time we could actually maybe extend the side wall of that?
Consider that.
Some material that would actually stop people from, stop them from just throwing stuff over and driving home.
Just trying to remember what kind of railing it has on there, does it sort of have a railing? So it depends on the type of concrete, the width of the concrete rail. If it's a wider, called corral rail, it's pretty easy to retrofit, change the pins on top of that. To bolt it in, probably drive the anchors in the concrete, bolt it on. If it's an over narrower railing, you might have actually removed the rail, or its hole. You could have just hold pins in front of the rail, I don't know if that would be real ideal. Probably get snagged by... Snap laws or something.
That's the only thing I think we'd have to double check, yeah.
Is something we can look into?
Is it from the history of the, of the farm? See, we have to figure out. It's probably why it's as low as it is.
No, it's, it's a standard height, it's, the height that it's made, built as now, is more for traffic purposes. Some of the cars, you know, flip over, it's as easy at least. Generally what I've seen, like chain link, maybe for reasons they go over railroads, they typically require higher protections so people don't throw something over on the edge and hit a train, type of thing. I think, I think it has, it's just gonna have to come back and look, maybe one of the widths would be the biggest factor. But it's a standard, I think, of one foot wide concrete beam, we've got quite the material there, either gratators or some, probably installed. We can look into some, some options for something like that.
Wouldn't want to do anything that would stop ag, but...
Kind of has to be a back-up, pretty important across the area.
I see we have one here on the October 14 meeting with KDOT. I met with Hugh and Brad there earlier today, Brad, you talked about it. Just lack of responsiveness, I guess you would say, from KDOT regarding that road down to 34. Are you documenting each of the times that you reach out and try to contact them?
I do not have phone call documentation, but I have emails and text confirmation.
I would, I'd like it if you would document when you make your phone calls, every time you make one, that you don't get a call back. Or even if you do get a call back, but when we go to that meeting down there, I'd like to go with that, with a list in hand about how many times they've failed.
I...
Return our phone, not our...
If there's no further questions or discussion, we'll call it as here. Request to go to the next item on the agenda, which is an engineering agreement for Kirk and Michael to provide construction engineering and materials testing services. During the construction of the 113 Road reconstruction and expansion project, the scope of the services would include scheduling and facilitating a pre-construction conference with the contractor and owner representatives, where we go over the, the plans, the details, the, the contract documents, construction specifications, schedules, subcontract... Construction specifications, schedules, subcontractors. Sort of clarify when they plan to start. Traffic control, who the main contacts are with the contractors. They do have a subcontractor for traffic control. Both part is the prime, the sub doing the signage and barricades. Provide daily inspection because of the size of this project. Being a full mile, it's got road replacement pipe coves that go into the roadway. Removing the old asphalt. Winding out the, to make it four lanes all the way up the highway fifty. And installing the base block as well as the pavement. We're anticipating we'll probably need two people out there full time just to be able to keep an eye on what operations that are going concurrently. And then have a third and a fourth person while they're doing paving operations. For the materials testing and fresh concrete. As construction is occurring, we'll record daily documentation of the items that are being completed by the contractor. The core quantities for payment and then develop the pay estimates for the county to issue to the contractor. Write change orders for changes in quantities or materials that are needed. And then we'll work with the county to develop a punch list for final cleanup and completion of the project. So this is an hourly contract plus expenses like mileage. Most of our staff are gonna be from out of town and they'll need hotels while they're here in town. So if you go to, second page, I think it is item B or section E three. In notes that we are proposing one site, one inspector full time for a hundred and ten, all a hundred and ten working days. A second inspector for half of those days, fifty five. And then a material tester on site for another sixteen days. And then item two, just above that, the maximum amount to exceed that we put together in the budget, which is attached to the packet as well. Is three hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Make a motion to approve the agreement?
I have a second. For discussion, how, how will Kirk and Michael test the concrete? Like, is this a depth test? Is this something that you? I, I guess what I'm trying to make sure we avoid is dual. And, and I just.
So we do our best to avoid that. So I'll go through, we already had a testing that we'll do. With the concrete itself, we'll, we'll collect, the concrete's gonna be made up of sand and rock mixed together.
Correct.
And we're using K-Doc specifications for the mixed proportions and the composition of that sand and rock. So we'll actually take samples of the sand and rock, before we put in the concrete and we'll test those for, it's called cement analysis or the size of the particles that's in it. And compare those to the mixed design and specifications to see what they are, meaning those. Then once they do mix it with the concrete or with the cement powder and the other additives. We'll check their, so as, as they batch it, we'll check their tickets to show that those proportions match up with the mixed design. When the concrete gets to the site, they're gonna test it for three primary items. One is the slump. Not to get too far from the meat.
That's right.
And how wet the concrete is essentially.
Yep.
There's a limit on how much the slump is. You're gonna check the air content. You want micro air bubbles in your concrete to help with frost resistance. And we have the testing devices to test for that. And then we'll also test the unit weight, which is a check of the air content and the other products that go into the concrete mix. We will also be checking the depth as they're painting. Have the contractor either check this through this once they're done painting. Or we'll have, we have a wind rolling device and that checks through this and have the correct any bumps in there. And also if they're using a paper, which this company does have a paper, I don't know if they're gonna use that on this particular project. But we'll use a density meter to see that their vibrators under paper is good to consolidate the concrete the way it's supposed to. Quite a bit of different testing there is into this. We'll also make the strength specimens of cylinders and beams. We'll make a bigger six inch tall by three inch diameter cylinders. That'll be hardened to twenty-eight days and then we put them in a breaker that we have in our office in Elmore. And test them for strength, see that they're four thousand PSI and metal, aggressive strength. We have the specification that way. The beams are flexible strength. It's also a measure for payment. They have the same machine does beam brakes as well. Check the concrete for strength as well. If you want to get into the details.
Well, I just, I just.
They're all for hours.
Well, again, it's, it's a three hundred thousand dollar ticket and it's, it's, you know, in my mind, I just want to make sure that as we go through another road project. That I, I don't, I don't, I don't want to have the, like, the last one. I mean, I want to make sure that, you know, we're getting the product and we, and I think that we'd ask for that kind of price. I mean, three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars can go a long way when you're asking for like salaries.
Understand.
Have engineers on site, so. It's, it's a lot, so. My mind, I just want this, I, I mean, I think we all want this. This is our main road. It's our driveway. We want that thing nailed. So I just, I just don't want to look back like we did on dual where we're all just.
Understand. We're gonna, we're gonna test the dirt as well as our compacting against, see if it's getting compacted. As well as the base rock there, again, using the same density machines. We'll test the compaction effort. As well as the moisture that is in those materials. They'll both have.
Dirt stabilization process for that?
Dirt not a stabilization process. It's gonna be compacted dirt without any kind of cement additive to it this time, so it'll just be compacted dirt what we want. The contractor is required to take samples of that dirt to a lab to have them. Put together the labs and they, they come up with optimal density and moisture content for that dirt. And it's, it's a visual observation to see if, if it all looks like the same dirt, you know, we won't have to do one sample. But if it's obvious that you have to change the color, we go from clay to sand, you have to get a sample for each type of material because they compact differently to different densities. So we'll have the contractor actually take it to an independent lab to get the optimum density done. And, but then we'll check the, the compact soil to see it's getting compacted the way it's supposed to. Once they get the soil compacted and cut to, to grade, the contractor's gonna put down the co-synthetic material, kind of like a multi-carpeting memos. And then they'll put their rock on top of that. So instead of doing a cement modification, we'll put it on a fabric and compacted rock.
Are you, are you there for the process of determining whether the soil has changed from this kind of soil to this kind of soil over there? And making sure that they're pulling all the samples that they do?
Our on-site inspection will be doing that, yes. And then if they're, if they feel like they need engineer support, I'll contact myself or other engineers.
Does it all start from the base, right?
Absolutely.
And this, there's no curve or guttering on this, right? It's just a smooth rough road?
That's correct.
And then how far out of the field is that grain will go? Is that, does, does it create more like a rocky ledge now that we're not asphalt? I mean, does it, how, how, it's probably not gonna be a sharp cutoff, right? To where if somebody's, I don't know, like just shoulder thinking about how I taught my kids to drive it, you, you take the wheels off the road and it's kind of rutting, you know, is it?
The rock, the rock base will be underneath the concrete and then it'll get buried in the dirt that's put up next to the concrete. And we did designate the concrete to be a little bit more than twelve foot wide.
Okay.
Per lane. It's gonna be four lanes, so it'll be, total width, it'll be forty, I guess forty-nine feet if we were right where we designated it. So four twelve foot lanes and about a half foot outside of that. To go wide than that, we'd have to go up by, by way of the entire board.
Yeah.
Have ditches and make it all fit. So we're making it fit in there kind of how it was done before. So I can have a paved soul around there currently. That could be added later.
I don't think it's necessary, but I just think that, you know, that's a lot of truck traffic in just case there's something that happens there. You know, you'd want to be able to make sure they can get to the side to maybe not have something drastic drop off, but.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be, it'll be dirt right up to this to paint.
Need for the discussion, Jim?
I appreciate it all. The exciting projects, sir.
Good for today.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next time, Mr. Communications Director. Good afternoon. I'd be delighted to continue our co-riff service for one right here. The deployment of the new rave system has taken longer than I expected. I don't feel that we're gonna be safely in a place where we can transition. And enable the new system and still provide critical precautions to people who some of the critical factors have. Done everything we can to get people moved over and migrated existing data. But we feel more comfortable with, with more range. The deployment took a lot longer than we had anticipated and bringing up against our contract that wanted to cancel the, the contract as well. So I think the, the safest decision at this point is go ahead and continue to co-riff for a year. And then, and then once I have that out, continue to work on it, keep me, give me.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the rule as presented. Second. Motion, second, any further question? Hi. Next time, Mr. Secretary of Car.
Hello, Jim.
How are you?
Good. Well, we're here to discuss the possibility of moving into an agreement with Enterprise F N Trust. Vehicle lease program. There would be all the opportunity to listen to the presentation, ask questions. Welcome to the up again for further questions. I've got Kenneth Olson here with Enterprise, Captain Hunter. That probably be a little better suited to answer the question. Been mulling this over, thorough members are out for a while now. We do feel as though this is an option, an opportunity to potentially save us some money. Get us in line. COVID obviously created quite a mess for us over the last few years. Purchasing vehicles and continue to see a growth in expenses. Haven't seen anything level off of what we're paying for vehicles in the last five years anyway. I think this will give us the opportunity, maybe, maybe get something leveled out for better suited budget, budgeting and expense wise. Commissioner Tass came out and done a one-on-one. We're all collectively have the same questions and what if? So I, I would encourage you, if you still have some of those questions, please ask them. Something new. But Ellis County, Hayes gone to it, the city of Garden City admin has gone to it. Pawnee County since. Mr. Olson did better answer some of those. But there is a movement of agencies, government entities moving towards this. Might be the new trend, I don't, I don't know. It seems, it looks really good.
Sheriff, how much of your fleet will be involved with this?
I think we're, right now, this year, the first year, we're looking at eight vehicles. And then next year, second year, it would be eight vehicles. I believe the third year, nine.
Nine and eight.
Nine and eight.
So a total of thirty-five. Four-year contract? So the con, contract's indefinite, but the lease schedule ranges from thirty-six to sixty months for the units that we're looking at?
So. Rotate vehicles in gradually. And then next year, then we would sell our current stock, which the county owns. And then the clock would be with, if we can move to this, we would create a line code to secure the funds, the budget funds to keep, make sure they stay in this, to keep it solvent. Obviously, we have the lease expense, but either way, we would still have the upfitting expense with the upfitters on the vehicle. So we want to make sure we stay there so we don't lose, lose the equity. And then when we rotate out, we throw that money back into that line.
When you say upfitting expense, is that the?
Lights, sirens.
And are you doing that in-house?
No, that's the company we still use, Wichita T C S.
They would sort of.
Yeah. So, and then it's my understanding, correct if I'm wrong, Kenneth, but we wouldn't make any payments until we physically receive the vehicles in our possession.
Correct.
So they would go from Enterprise to T C S and once T C S gets them and delivered to us, at that point, we'd be responsible for the payment.
Scheduled for cycling them out?
Yeah, the idea, because there's thirty, thirty-four, thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five vehicles. So rather, thirty-five at, at once, we figured with the mileage where we're at on the current fleet, we could just gradually rotate them in over years. So it wouldn't be such a.
I'm talking about the least ones, cycling those back down, assuming this goes on for a couple of years.
Well, yeah, they would get miled out, we're looking at miled out.
It ranges, yes, sir.
Yeah.
So, so one of the biggest pieces of the programs, we're meeting with the team on a quarterly basis.
Right.
So right now, we've got it ranging from thirty-six to sixty months given the, the specific vehicle. But there's an opportunity in many cases to get out early and there's a need to extend out longer in some cases as well. So the, the mileage is estimated. We've got some at ten, some at fifteen, some at twenty and so forth. But that's all gonna be adjusted as time goes on and as.
What do you, what do you mean the mileage is gonna be estimated at ten, fifteen and twenty?
Ten thousand, ten.
So at ten thousand miles, we could be turning the corner?
That's the average annual mileage for something like the, the tracks, for example. Some of those that we're looking at, more of an administrative role.
Civil processes.
Where there are a lot of these around town.
A little bit, yeah.
And those were set up at, I believe, forty-eight months, so we're running those to forty thousand. But it does bring a good point. There's, there is an opportunity in the past five, ten years. We've got out of a lot of government vehicles at twelve and twenty-four months with five to ten thousand dollars. And it all goes back to, you guys buy vehicles extremely well. We sell a couple million used vehicles every year. And oftentimes, given the government incentives and that structure, we can sell them at ten thousand miles. More than they were even worth. So, and that, that's really what my team's looking at on a regular basis. We're analyzing all of the variables from cost of ownership standpoint, not only the capital budget, but also the operating budget. And we're bringing that to the team so they can make really good decisions on when to get in and out of these vehicles.
Sheriff, do you think this changes the mindset of your employees at all, like with, with, within your team to where we aren't owning these anymore? So maybe there's not a, hey, I need to really take care of the vehicle versus now, hey, I'm just leasing it. I'll get out of this thing in a short time?
I don't, because we, we hold them to a big standard already. We've got some leased vehicles.
Okay.
I expect them to keep them clean anyway. I, I do regular checks. I mean, we do on a very common basis that they're, we get in, admin gets in and then looks at it. We evolved into our own system. We expect from the vehicles to be the same. They, they live in those cars.
Yeah, I just didn't know if going to a system like this, if they had actually tested wear on the inside or maybe, you know, seats are always ripped or cut or something because we get in and out of it and.
Yeah.
It's just, I mean, if, if that brings the price down or it doesn't change. It just, I mean, if, if that brings the price down or it doesn't change it.
It certainly does. If you beat the, beat the heck out of it, it's gonna sell for less and it's your equity. So it's very similar to the ownership model where security won't keep it as good, as possible condition. But I would say almost that the opposite is in my experience with government densities. Usually by having a newer, fresher fleet of vehicles, the folks often respect that, appreciate that from a morale standpoint. And we often see the opposite, actually take better condition, especially, you know, some, some of our non pursuit type vehicles, the road and bridge or a praiser or whatnot. A lot of those vehicles ran, say, twenty years in many cases. And, and we see a pretty good morale impact when you put a person out, a newer vehicle.
Sure. One of the, one of the questions, speaking of equity, when I'm out there in the business, is about the equity in those vehicles as they roll out of the fleet and they renew again. And how we, how we accomplish recovering that equity in that vehicle and what our options are with that.
Yep.
Talking about some of the auction sites and things like that. So what have we come up with on that?
My, my recommendation is to have us sell the vehicles on your behalf. We'll sell all of the client-owned county vehicles that are outside right now, as well as the enterprise vehicles down the road. When we sell those vehicles, we have essentially three options. We can write you a check, um, that's where that equipment reserve fund would come in and our line item fund that would come in. And we can put that back into that equipment fund to offset the cost moving forward. We can roll equity and use it as a down payment or as an invoice credit. And that, quite frankly, can change soon due to what the county's trying to account, right? But having that equipment fund set up is very important because in most cases, we see capital outlay be, be greater than going out and buying two or three vehicles a year, right? Once we, once we're fully implemented, we got thirty-five vehicles on lease, there is gonna be a strong, a higher capital budget. But that equity's offsetting, it's your money either way. Whether we write a check and it goes back to a general fund or whatever, it's staying in the county. But if we have that in the shares fund, then that's a direct correlation with offsetting that budget that's coming out of it. And with getting in and out of these vehicles a lot quicker, we're gonna see that budget impact much quicker. The, the other side of that, though, is almost immediately, you're gonna see a reduction in your maintenance, you're gonna see a reduction in your fuel simply by getting into your more efficient vehicles.
Sheriff, could you, like, as this continues, could you just give us an update, maybe?
Oh, absolutely.
A year from now to say, hey, we got our first date, this is how it's going, about to get our next date. We're thinking, you know, this is, we feel pretty good about this or this is what we treat on the other side of it, so.
Well, not, not that I don't trust Kenneth here, but.
Yeah.
We went to the extreme, we actually drove to Hayes and spoke with Sheriff and his admin. Uh, it was just very.
Yeah.
It's something new, uh, so we actually, when I wanted to know, you know, what's the good, bad, the other, what have we missing? And they didn't give me anything bad.
But they're also new into it.
They're in year two. Yeah, they're in. So we, I just partnered with them, actually partnered with Russell this morning. We just partnered with the land lines, we've got a lot of newer counties, of course, but I also have partnered with Shawnee County for countless years, unified government. And kind of worked my way out of Kansas City if you were. One, one thing I wanted to add there, though, we do an annual client review that's based, so all our meetings are based around your budget years. Typically, our annual client review will be done in January, uh, February timeframe. First year, you're not gonna see a tremendous amount of data that comes because we're almost there, right? But by the second year, we'll have a full annual client review and that's often a good time. Sheriff can bring it back at any time, of course, but we'll do an, an analysis. And then our second, third and fourth meetings are really based around the budget year, which will bring the budget preparation, the budget data to you all. But that, that annual client review is often a good time to look at what they picture, see what we've done and what we're getting.
The other thing to piggyback on what you were just talking about with our current. So I know we have one vehicle right now, but we have another department that's interested in. So I like what we've been doing, if you're all around the world, so it's, again, I come back to you all and make a recommendation to transfer one of our vehicles to another county department. Or you got some vehicles. Got an interest in a vehicle. But again, it goes back to, they're not putting a lot of miles on, but it's a nice vehicle and we know it'll fit their needs, so.
Have these first aid, the jet lined out, are they a blend of cars, trucks?
It is a, yeah.
Four-wheel drive and two-wheel drive?
Like I said, I, I, I like this model because we're better suited, kind of pick and choose for the division, for the use. I don't need a full-size pickup for, like, some processing. But they've got, they've got an all-wheel drive, smaller SUV, which I think will be better for economic, uh, fuel consumption. But yet, the ability to get around on dirt roads and snow, I mean, that, it's just a division that the court doesn't shut down. So their department, you know, cars and the offices. The work that gets backed up, so we're looking at things like that. Attention, and again, we're looking also, uh, the ability to, uh, not be upfitting expenses. I think we could reduce some of those in some of these vehicles. What's necessary, what's not necessary. So maybe just a radio, not all the lights and stuff. But again, depending on the division, so. We're looking, we can redefine, uh, expenses to. Kind of, I think we're gonna save some money. We've been tearing this thing inside now, literally for months. And there's an out, I mean, there's an out clause too, so something else, I mean, something pops up, literally just a glaring grid flag, we can't get a solution on it, we'll bounce out.
It's all based around that specific vehicle?
No.
Master agreement, um, that we would ask you to enter into the agreement, but it's just an indefinite agreement. And then the actual financial obligation is based on that specific vehicle. So we can sell it, you can pay off the remaining balance, you can depreciate it to zero. And we have that flexibility built in one, so you can get out of partnership if you need to. But also so that we can get out early. If we can sell that vehicle early and capitalize on the equity or we can extend out longer, uh, and, and do what's best for you from the total cost ownership I've reset away.
And the agreements have been sent to legal counsel, aren't you?
Yeah, we did that. Only other thing that, if I can, uh, one, wanted to thank Sheriff and Captain Hunter. We, we've been talking for a very long time, um, so appreciating all their efforts and it's been a really good conversation. They have no very deep, limited diligence standpoint. Secondly, um, most of our counties, there are other departments that we help with, such as Fire, Road and Bridge, Praiser, Assessor, whatever it be. We have not dove into that side of it, but I would be happy to run the same analytics as time goes on and maybe as they see how the sheriff's side goes or whatever that looks like. You'll have client strategy, strategy manager immediately, but me and the coroner, I would come in and analyze, um, what that would look like from a getting started standpoint. So I'm happy to do so, um, at any point in time for any of the departments, um, who look out for them. Typically, a pretty good opportunity on, on the road, we're excited and have other departments.
Make a motion to, uh, approve the preparation. All second. Motion seconded and approved, discussion. Favor.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
And we will keep track of it.
You have yours?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I want to talk to you about having, uh, our budget hearing, special meeting. We're a few weeks behind this year, gentlemen, by the start of either late May or June. So it has to be done before the twenty-first.
Twenty.
Twenty. Which is a Sunday, it's a great time. So meantime, next week or the week after would probably be best.
This week is my only available.
Yeah, or this week.
Or I can do it tonight.
Yeah, this week or.
About tomorrow.
Tomorrow's good.
Here.
After making tomorrow work, good afternoon.
You have to do it after three tomorrow, or, yeah, tomorrow or Wednesday.
Uh, I'm.
Tomorrow after three, anytime after three would be fine.
I got a chill.
Yep.
I leave Wednesday afternoon and we'll be back until Monday morning. Wednesday morning? Let's name tomorrow afternoon, tell it tomorrow after three. You're just gonna say.
Three thirty, all right.
Three, three thirty, all right. I repeat, do you want to decide on your motion?
So what are we going to decide? What, if they're going over the R and R?
They probably won't go over the R and R.
Well, what I need by the twentieth is whether we're going over the R and R, how much our levy potential is and how much money they're going to potentially ask. That's what I need by.
We're probably not gonna go over the R and R. We haven't ever gone over the R and R. So, but we still need to have this, we still need to have, we're gonna make that. Make that decision tomorrow at their meeting, right? I'll make that decision now, but probably not gonna go out and see how we're gonna go. I mean, we're, we're, we would want to open, if we go over, over R and R, we have to, to revoke, right? So we're, we're not gonna do that, we haven't ever done that. We'll adjust our budget accordingly so we don't go over R and R.
One thing that has changed this year that will be in our favor, that if we say we want going over the R and R and for some reason the values went down, we will still get the money that we need here, but then that will put us over the R and R. That is one change that we made. Next year, we can be able to revoke any of this, they were looking at changing something to actually be this year, but it's been very bad for us.
Department heads are here, are you guys all available tomorrow? Who's not available tomorrow? If you can, send somebody. If you can't, I can present your audit as well.
I can say they are.
Who's not available tomorrow?
John just did a ten meeting, two for, uh.
We're about to.
I'm available.
What's that?
This one typically in the past.
No.
Okay.
Tomorrow will be very soon. If, if not, you know, our budgets are only gonna be to two percents for the salaries. There are some that are over that we worked, that we worked out through the budget. But yet, this is just a draft budget. Do you need a motion on this?
I was questioning.
Yeah, I would say this may be. So I make a motion to set the date of the meeting, July eighth, time of the meeting, three thirty and a half. Second. Second, any further discussion? All those favor?
Aye.
And gentlemen, every year we go over the mileage rate, uh, if there is an increase. I did receive from the court services that they were notified, the mileage rate increase will be seventy cents per mile for privately owned automobiles. Ask that you approve this mileage increase.
Make a motion to approve the changes presented.
Seconded.
Motion seconded and approved, discussion. All those favor?
Aye.
Aye. Upcoming meeting, we have Naco Annual Conference that will be in Philadelphia this year. It's gonna be July, maybe the fourteenth. Special meeting that was just scheduled for tomorrow at three thirty. Budget hearings, we have the river meeting, the second river meeting of July, July twenty-first. Chair of the Kansas Association of Counties Annual Conference next week. I will be in just talking this evening at eleven. And that's all I have for that one. Mr. Chuck.